I have been going through as well as spending more time with my children. I have enjoyed the time that I've been working with you all and look forward to working with you all again in the future. I cannot express enough the importance of what we do for the children in our school system each and every day. Thank you all for your understanding and your ongoing commitment to the kids of our schools. This is not goodbye, it is see you later for now. Respectfully, Kelly Tarmath. I would like to say thank you, Kelly, for the time that you served our community and that you served here with us on the school committee. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else like to?
Yeah, big thank you to Advisory Committee as we're really doing a deep dive into stipends as we get ready to come into the budget process, but also as we get ready to come into negotiations with our teachers and our ed techs. And so we've had a committee that has been meeting on a fairly Advisory Committee. And then we also had a school committee workshop on
Thank you very much. Moving on to superintendent reports, we're going to start with the student representative reports.
So it's been a bit since the last meeting, but we had homecoming, which went awesome. In fourth place were the freshmen who put out a great show for their first time. I thought that their float was amazing, especially for freshmen, I thought that it was really cool. Juniors took third, sophomores took second, and seniors took first. So very happy about that. And then speaking of homecoming, we also had the crowning of the homecoming queen, which was Sophia Towne, out of I think 23 candidates. It was a lot of, there was a lot of people, which is very impressive. So good for Sophia. And then tonight is the, the boys' football team has a playoff game in TA. So hopefully that goes well and they can play one more game at the school.
The Stanford High School math team has had a really great start to their season. We've had two meets, one last week at TRAP Academy and one a couple weeks ago in Wells. And at both meets, we scored the highest out of all the teams in our area. And then on top of that, Ms. Warner is working on starting a chapter of National Art Honor Society for students, sort of like National Honor Society, but are more serious about art. And if students are interested, they can see Ms. Warner in B141. And we're hoping to set up funding and everything for that in the next few weeks.
So peer helpers, they're having their annual Thanksgiving food drive. So that's going to run from today all the way till next Friday, the 17th. So they're looking to collect Thanksgiving food items to reach their goal of 60 Thanksgiving basket to make sure everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. And so each grade is being asked to bring in a different type of food. So freshmen are asked to bring in instant mashed potatoes, sophomores are asked to bring in gravy and cranberry sauce, juniors canned veggies, and seniors stuffing. And also, so like the class that donates the most items, they'll be awarded with a pizza party, which is kind of cool. And so the boxes will be in the main lobby to kind of drop off those items. And then also the civil rights had their day of welcome last week. It was kind of a week-long event where they taught students about the varying ways in which people identify. And then each student at Stanford High School community was asked to wear a different color each day to encourage acceptance towards these identities.
Awesome. Yeah, great things going on and a wide variety of things. We've got some more news to report if folks, if you don't mind. Moving on, we have some field trips just to announce. The Skills USA Leadership Conference already took place. Actually, I think that's going to be rescheduled from Friday, the 27th. Still waiting for word on that. Science Bowl Exhibition Competition, that's scheduled for this upcoming Saturday as far as we know. We have our enrollment update. We certified our enrollment with the Maine Department of Education. That's a big deal because we certify the enrollment as well as some other important factors on October 1st. That is the data that is used by the Department of Education when they look at their, developing their EPS 279 reports. And so we want to make sure that we, that data is accurate, is best to be in favor for the Sanford School Department. And so a big thank you to Ann Luer as well as all of our other people working on that. As you can see up there, our student enrollment is up from October 1st, 2022. Our attending counts are up by 47 students. And our subsidy counts, who we receive subsidy for, are up for 53 students. And then some of the other indicators that also impact subsidy and funding would be economic status reports. And we have an increase in economic status of 168 compared to last year. And then in special education, we have an increase in special education students, a 40 student increase from our October 1st, 2022 report. And our English language learners, also an increase in our October 1st report this year, increase of 46 students. I mention that because we're always paying attention to that because that's going to be impacting our subsidy. As you know, when student enrollment is up, that's a good thing because our valuation is also going to be up. And when your valuation is up, the formula then thinks they expect you to be able to pay more towards the funding of education. So whenever you have increased valuation and a decrease in students, that's a bad combo. So we were able to offset that. I already talked about earlier in the meeting about health insurance and some of the data that we're getting there. That is not trending well. But if you look at some of these other trending things, they are going up, which I think is going to be helpful when it comes to our subsidy report. Any questions on the October 1st student enrollment? would be economic status reports. And we have an increase in economic status of 168 compared to last year. And then in special education, we have an increase in special education students, a 40 student increase from our October 1st, 2022 report. And our English language learners, also an increase in our October 1st report this year, increase of 46 students. I mention that because we're always paying attention to that because that's going to be impacting our subsidy. As you know, when student enrollment is up, that's a good thing because our valuation is also going to be up. And when your valuation is up, the formula then thinks they expect you to be able to pay more towards the funding of education. So whenever you have increased valuation and a decrease in students, that's a bad combo. So we were able to offset that. I already talked about earlier in the meeting about health insurance and some of the data that we're getting there. That is not trending well. But if you look at some of these other trending things, they are going up, which I think is going to be helpful when it comes to our subsidy report. Any questions on the October 1st student enrollment? That is a missed school day because of weather. The school year. So you get a short-term reprieve, but you got to pay for it in the end. Aiden and Emma, as seniors, you're probably like, that's okay. Yeah, we'll we'll make that trade any day of the week. But right now, just letting people know when there is weather, we try to make that decision as early as we can. And sometimes that's at 5 o'clock in the morning. And then sometimes it usually 5:00 in the morning to 5:30 is when we're trying to to be able to notify people just so that they can be able to get ready. That's what we shoot for. Sometimes there may be some other circumstances that we have. There may be other situations where the weather's cooperating, but it may take us some more time to get our schools ready to open. And that's when sometimes there might be a delay, one-hour delay or a two-hour delay with that. So that information will be going out, really not changing from what we've done in the past in terms of how we handle the inclement weather when it arrives. Any questions or feedback from the school committee on those procedures?
Okay, moving forward to director's reports. And I'm going to present to you David Boger.
Yep, right there is fine. If you just want to push the green button. Can you hear me? Hear me okay?
Yep. Well, I want to thank you guys for having me here to talk a little bit about something that I'm really passionate about, school lunch. Slide, please. I'll jump right in and talk about some good things here in at Sanford. And we're seeing in Maine pretty much across the board. A steep increase of lunch participation was observed with the onset of the pandemic and free and reduced prices, sorry, free meals for all coming onboard. We see that biggest spike there in 2019 to 2020. One of the things I'm more excited about and a little more pertinent to this talk is is the 2023 numbers and breakfasts rise and its relation to lunch. We're looking really good there. And those trends are continuing to come up. You know, breakfast is always a little bit of a challenging place for us to increase participation. It probably will never outpace lunch for a number of reasons, but this is really encouraging as it does rise in proportion to the lunches served. Slide, please. So I was asked to talk about specifically about lunch, sorry, breakfast participation. What are we doing to maybe access some of those kiddos that we are missing? We're facing a bunch of challenges, but there's also a lot of bright spots. I think I'll say this first and foremost, that everybody should know, we are functioning under a breakfast after the bell program. We're required to do that as part of our demographics here in Sanford. So what that is, is we are required to offer breakfast to all of our students after that first bell. We are not operating, which is called a second chance breakfast. That is something where we would need buy-in from administration to actually carve out a small portion of the day after the bell rang to give extra time for kiddos to eat. The the breakfasts look a little bit different at every school. Sanford Pride, I'll use it as an example. We're, as I said, increasing participation across the board. We're doing about 200 meals in 20 minutes there. So in a primary school setting, we're hot and heavy right through. As soon as those kiddos arrive, we're trying to get them in as fast as we can. Before that 8:25 mark, we've had to increase some service lines at Sanford Pride, for example, to really move those kids through. One of the things that we do have to do in that setting, where I love to to offer as many options as possible, we've pared back options. Because at that age group, getting the kids through the line, self-selecting can be really challenging. So less is more. At the middle school and high school level, it's a little bit different. Kids start rolling in as soon as they're allowed to be in the building, and they can get breakfast right up until that first lunch service bell. The, you know, you should you should know that identifying the people that haven't had meals is is where we need to talk about collaboration. Because food service can do as much as we can, providing those meals, providing healthy meals, offering meals, and having staff available to process those meals right up until lunchtime is something we're always going to be doing, always willing to do. But identifying the kiddos that missed a meal, that's something that we're not so good at. We're not on the ground. We need we need buy-in from ed techs, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, whoever it is, to help identify those kids, especially at the elementary school level. They haven't had a meal. They need to eat. Let's get them down to the cafeteria because we are going to feed them. There is a picture there of a little breakfast cart. I know it's been talked about probably in this district. I've seen it at a lot of the other districts of bringing the classroom, bringing the breakfast to the classroom. There's a whole host of challenges that go along with that. I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but I think it's important to know that that is an option if we find that we're not reaching everybody. That model is in place in a lot of schools. I've been a part of it, and it is effective. It was a model that was brought in before COVID to help us bring those participation numbers for breakfast up, and it has been really effective. Right now, our participation rates are really, really good. I'm not sure something like this would actually bump our participation up as much as having some help identifying those kids, really doing a little outreach to get to those kids that haven't had breakfast at those lower levels. The high school, at the middle school, it's a different picture there. They can they can come through when they want. At those levels, we're dealing with with other challenges, the competition from area businesses. We'll go into that a little bit. Next slide, please.
David, just so I can pop in, the so there's times when breakfast is offered, but my understanding is at all of our schools between when that ends and when lunch is beginning, if people do come down for breakfast, there is available at all of our schools?
Yes. And that is something that we are we are mandated to do as part of our demographics, to have what's called another option for them to get breakfast. So that takes, you know, identifying the need, who needs breakfast, and then having them get sent down, whether we have them with, if they're, you know, a second grader, they're going to need assistance. And then also communicating when and how do they eat that meal. I understand bringing a meal back to the classroom after the start of school bell is a distraction, distraction to that student, distraction to people around them. But we also know that not having a meal can also be a distraction. So that's really what we want to identify and get those kids fed in that allotted time, but also, you know, reaching them through that second chance. It's not called second chance, but a second option. Lunch participation has been great. We are seeing participations of upwards of 80%. I'm not sure we can go much higher, but we are going to continue to try. We're going to start offering more scratch-cooked items. We're going to be offering, and we already have started to bring in more fresh produce. These are things that will help us market our program. People eat with their eyes. We can we'll chat it up with all the communication mechanisms that we have about all these new things coming. But again, participation rates are great. They've leveled off a little bit, but in order to kind of fine tune those numbers and get them continue to grow, fresher is better. Scratch-cooked items are some of the ideas that I have to help increase those participation rates. So I would be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the trends that we are seeing in free and reduced price. This is a look at Sanford over the course of several years. The biggest drop, you know, precipitous drop from 2014 to 2019, and, you know, the pandemic hits us. We see a huge drop there. That probably has a lot to do with the fact that meals are free. There's more money in the system for people to get benefits for unemployment and such. Maybe they don't qualify. But those that dip down to the 40%, we have seen that pretty much carry on through to where we are now. Can you hit the next slide? And we're not the only ones. This is what we're seeing in southern Maine. These are some of our area York County schools, Portland in blue, Bitterford in orange, Sanford in gray, and Massapeusik U-57 in yellow. We're all kind of seeing this same trend and the biggest dips in 2021 during the pandemic with those free meals, with the added benefits out there. So we're not alone. There this will bring us to some challenges. Slide, please. Some of the other challenges we're up against in both participation in both lunch and breakfast are our area competition. So what I like to do, and I ask my kitchen managers to do, we keep our ear to the trends, what's going on. Oh, you got lunch at Chipotle. Would you eat? You know, we can make a we can make a Chipotle chicken rice bowl, and I can make it with commodity chicken. And you know what? You can't beat my price because my meals are always free. Other other competitions are meals being brought from home. You know, that's all well and good, but data shows us that meals being brought for home are not as complete and not as nutritious as school lunches. USDA school lunches offer whole grains and fresh fruits and vegetables. The data is showing us that they're healthier, and we are seeing trends in lower lower obesity rates of 3% over the last several years. So we are making an impact. And, you know, we it's it's up to us to to know what the trends are, to listen to what people want, and try to fine tune that to kind of meet them where they are. So with the trial with the challenges of lowering eligibility with competition, we need to rise to the challenge. We need to offer fresher meals, easy grab-and-go options that are bright and colorful and seasonal. We need to start bringing in more fresh produce. I see additional salad bars at some of these primary schools that don't have them. I'm getting some pushback from kitchen managers there, but I think there's a place we can find a way to make that work. And, you know, I have a little picture of the breakfast cart there. If we want to talk about putting some carts in higher traffic areas to increase participation in some of the places that we find it harder to increase participation, that is a thought, that is an option. But really, marketing the program with fresh, seasonal, colorful food, for me, that's really the way we're going to sell our meals. People are going to start talking. People are going to participate more. Slide, please. So talk a little bit about expanding and adding programs. You know, we have a lot of awesome programs that I'm excited about. We have the CACFP at-risk after-school program. This is a program that's been up and running here and there. We have it going strong this year, stronger than ever. Ever. We are doing about 100 meals a day for that after-school program, really filling a need. We've expanded the offerings from four days to, sorry, from three days to four days and saw 80% 80 meals on that additional day we add Wednesday. We weren't sure how it would go in the early release day, but a little bit of a dip, but we're still at 80 meals for that day. So that's some great reimbursement that we're going to be seeing from that program. One of the things that I really want to do is we get a lot of commodity foods. Commodity foods are really the backbone of most school lunch programs. It's essentially free meat, cheese, frozen fruits and veggies. So they're really important part. But what we could do, and I want to do next year, is divert some of that money to what is called the Department of Defense Fresh Produce Program. We can peel off some of that money, and instead of getting canned and frozen, we can get fresh berries, fresh green beans, all fresh from one of these new vendors, Native Maine, that I'm hoping to bring in. If they if we do go DOD, they will have to deliver to us. Right now, I'm not sure they're willing to deliver to us. Also, when we talk about changing demographics, dips in eligibility, we need to start looking and being creative at ways we can fill those funding gaps. Grant opportunities are all over the place out there, so it's up to me and my staff to jump on those when we can. And then we have to have difficult conversations about, you know, funding. If we if we lose certain funding for certain programs, what are those programs? How important are they that we want to maybe talk about additional funding from from the school to keep those programs going? But it really takes first looking for for other creative opportunities, namely grants. So coming back to what this is really about, participation and namely breakfast participation, I really want the big takeaway from you guys to know that all students have that opportunity to get breakfast whenever they want, if it's allowed by their teacher, by whoever it is to come down, get that breakfast. We're there for them. It's a matter of identifying them, making it possible for them to to come down, but also have a place to eat it and not be a distraction. Maybe I ran on a little too long there, but I will take your questions now.
I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you had given thought or consideration to any student focus groups based on the feedback that you're giving, you know, wanting to explore different programs. I I have a child who packs lunch. Yes, same thing every day, grilled chicken, quinoa, and veggies.
Wow.
But I'd like him to get a free Chipotle rice bowl.
That you you make an excellent point. That is definitely something that is something I've done in the past. We had that going at Old Orchard Beach and got some really, really good information setting up like a Google, what's the Google when you fill out?
Oh, like a form.
Form. And it was really useful information. And I would love, I would definitely like to do that here. So that's a great point. And it's great to get the kids involved in so many different aspects. But that if they can have a little bit of a hand on what's coming, you know, and what's offered, I think it's it's another way to really help bolster the program, increase participation. That's a really good idea. Keep an eye out for that.
I will, for sure. And then I want to just clarify between the breakfast after bell program and the second chance breakfast program.
Yes.
So we can, as a school committee, better understand how we can support you. So my so the understanding is that the breakfast after the bell program, that offers, is that just an acute period of time in which they're able to come in after the bell and get breakfast kind of? Is that without any kind of approval process, meaning they can just come into your cafeteria if they're three minutes late and get breakfast?
What what would happen in under that that model is the the you would have to set aside, say, between period two and three, we're going to have that after the bell. I get these two programs mixed up, breakfast after the bell and second chance breakfast. The 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 one that you're referencing, the breakfast after the bell, you would need to have allocate some time. That'd have to be worked into the school day. That'd be the same that same little 15-minute period. So you're you're taking away essentially from the school day. Now, the model that we have currently working here, that we we offer breakfast to everyone after the bell, that is up to them to figure out when and where they're going to eat that meal. Meaning, we could eat it right, take it right back to the classroom, or we could just say, okay, you grab your breakfast. Why don't you just stay in the cafeteria and eat it? Now that I'm saying this, I'm also realizing the challenges of of that, having kids just sitting in a cafeteria. We have to have monitors. We also have to make sure that that cafeteria has been cleaned and sanitized each time someone's been eating in it. So there's going to take, there is communication going on. And I think what's happening is when a kid comes down from, say, Sanford Pride after the bell, they take it back to the classroom is what I think is happening. And I think those those teachers allow that. And we need we need them to allow that. It's tough, but.
So is there a way for us to get data of how many kids just over a period of time are arriving late to school and of those kids who are accessing breakfast? Typically, we have some chronic absenteeism. And so I'm wondering if that particular demographic is consistently missing a meal, or if that demographic is accessing the program that's available to them?
Yeah, and it would be really useful information that we could kind of pinpoint the kids and then kind of have either an outreach person or an ed tech kind of reach out to them on a daily, did you have breakfast today? I mean, I think that's probably already happening. I think teachers are probably checking in a lot on on kiddos and saying, you know, you seem a little off today. Do you have breakfast? You know, you're late today. Do you have breakfast? I hope that's a question that's being asked a lot to kids that are showing up late, like one of the first questions. And.
So I'm confident that we could have the data on who's coming to school late. That's going to have to be an added piece, though, of those people who's getting to who's being able to get to breakfast. I think what you may find is that there may be some people who, as they check in, whether that's with the school at the front office, or whether that's when they get into their class, they may be asking, have you had breakfast in terms of what the circumstances are to be able to get that and then be able to go to class. But I'm not sure we're keeping that as a as a as a data point. And then, you know, the it's a there's also the idea of not wanting to have. know, the, it's a, there's also the idea of not wanting to have chronic, where it's going to be the same exact time in terms of doing that, where someone's going to say, I can be late because I'll just take my time and eat my breakfast. And there might be some class avoidance or things there. So it's one of those tricky things, but I think it's going to be important for David to monitor participation rates, and then for us to probably, from an administrator's standpoint, check in to see about those procedures. I think you might be able to also, David, monitor what you've got for people after you stop serving breakfast between then and lunch, how many that you're giving out, how many people are accessing that?
Yeah, I think we should start recording that data, and, and that'd be very useful. And if you wanted to, you know, drill down specifically on, you know, this is a list of kids that I had that showed up late today. I mean, I could in real time tell you if those kids had breakfast or not for that day. And, and I could even look back to see if they're eating breakfast, you know, throughout the week. It takes a little bit of work on the, on the software, but.
And that's because when they come to get it, they have to give a?
POS, point of sale, everyone's going to ID.
So we do have the data in terms of being able to look at that. So there might be some cross, cross-referencing that we can do there.
Yeah. And, and again, I think just having collaboration to identify and then, and education that this is offered and it is available. I really hope that I'm getting that across that, and maybe I need to announce that somehow, that breakfast is, is available, even if you missed it, at all schools, right up to, right up to lunchtime. We'll have a staff member, I mean, it might take a minute. You might have to get a staff member to come set you up, you know, if it's 10:30 and we're getting real close to lunch, but we'll, we'll stop what we're doing. We'll get you your breakfast. It might be a limited option, but we'll ring you through and we'll, we'll get you breakfast.
I can say that when you're late at MCS, they send you to get breakfast, or they ask you when you get there, first thing. Claire used to have her bag breakfast every time that I was running behind, so it does happen.
And I may have personal experience with this, that some of my kids may have eaten breakfast, and if you offer them a second one, they may be able to absolutely.
And I love to get it across, even if you came with, with, with breakfast, or you had breakfast at home, you might be hungry in two hours. You can grab that grab and go item, put it in your backpack, and it's a snack later, you know, and it's a reimbursable meal for me. So, you know, anyway, we can increase participation. I'm, I'm down.
Yeah, but, you know, just, you sound really excited about your PR work. I, I think that is an important note for, I bet a lot of people don't know that.
Okay.
Yeah. And we are hearing from teachers that there is some hunger.
Okay.
We're also hearing that the level of snacks that they provide themselves in their classrooms are being used at a much more rapid rate this year than they have in prior years. We don't really know why, you know. So I think any little tip or trick to offset that, I think that that's a really good point.
Yeah. And it lines up with what I'm hearing, too. You know, I look at the, the free and reduced price numbers, and then I hear what's really going on in town, and none of it really seems to line up, you know. And those numbers are, are one thing, but like, the reality is another, you know. And, 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 and what's going on with, with, with the depletion of snacks rapidly, more rapidly is, you know, there's stuff going on in these kiddos' lives and.
Well, and I think you definitely touch upon that with the free and reduced lunch numbers are not necessarily the painting the true picture of what's going on. And we were reminded of that today with the email that we got from our guidance director, Beth Laterno, because they are doubling the Thanksgiving baskets to the point where even if there was a need now, she's unable to fill that need. So I think that making sure that we're all aware that, you know, sometimes it takes a little time for the true data to catch up, those of us who are on the school committee or follow school committee policy. Although it's fantastic to have free meal access, there's a little bit of, what would you call it? A drawback, because there's not an incentive to necessarily turn in the forms that give the true representation of the data. So I think that it's really important to keep that in mind.
I really wish there were better ways to measure, other than the free and reduced price form, additional ways, at least the cross-reference, you know, because the numbers you were putting up, it's kind of interesting to me that it's not lining up particularly with my numbers, you know. But there are other ways, and, and they're just not necessarily using them, the data census and things like that, but, so.
Um, I, I just want to say one thing. I echo what Jen said. Thank you so much for your enthusiasm, and you're just, everything that you're thinking about outside of the box and just within the parameters that we have, I really, really appreciate it. And my children are very excited every morning that they get to have a second breakfast because we're constantly running late. We've got a lot of kids at the house, so inevitably. So I always hear, I'll just have breakfast at school. And I'm like, thank you.
Love it.
So thank you very much. And I think, Anne, did you want to say something? Sure. I will allow you. Was it a question specifically for?
No, it's more a comment.
Oh.
Is this, is this mic on? So my name's Anne Henselman, and I'm here as an advisory board member of the Sanford Backpack Program. We haven't met yet, so it's lovely to see your presentation, David, and chat, I hear your, what you have to say. I just want to echo what Jen said, and she is an advisory member of the board as well, but we are hearing from our teachers and the people that we're serving in our community here in Sanford, that our students are hungry. And we all know personally, I'm sure at times, that when we're hungry, it's really hard to concentrate. We get frustrated, angry, all of those things as adults, right? So the Backpack Program exists because we recognized, a group of us a long time ago, that the impact of that on students is that it's really hard to learn when they're hungry. And our program has partnered with the school department for years to successfully impact that youth hunger. So I just want to share in a public setting that the program would support any efforts that our school nutrition department and our school committee want to make in terms of rallying our cadre of amazing volunteers that we have. You know, so if there was some out of the box thinking about increasing breakfast numbers, we have volunteers are already embedded in our school system and are there on Thursdays at our middle school and high school that would be just super excited to put more effort forth and just keep us in mind as an additional resource that doesn't affect the budget and that has really enthusiastic partners here in Sanford. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Anne. Any other questions for David or? Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Okay, moving forward, Jane Perkins. Nice to see you.
Yes, nice to see you. Thank you for this opportunity. Anytime we get to talk about adult ed is a good time. So thank you. Our motto, as you can see, is how can we help? And we take that to heart. And that's our number one goal, is to help folks. And so I'd like to help you by sharing the slideshow with you and some exciting things that we're working on. This is our staff. You see a group picture. I think it was the only sunny day in June, and we got together, and we worked on some team building, and we had a barbecue together. And it's really important to bring staff together so, because we're, we're doing important work. So it's nice when I got, when I was putting this together to see all the different pictures. And I have an operations manager. Her name's Lisa Merlin. I have two administrative assistants, Noreen Parent. She does all the enrichment part, and I'll explain that as well. Sherry Tweedy does all the academics for us. Kate Points is our career navigator, and that's funded by a grant from the DOE. And then I have six teachers, Risa Grace, Jeff Grace, Tina Parks, Allison Brewster, John Tibbetts, and David Ramsey. That's our graduation picture. And it was my first graduation with my students. And I can tell you, once that music started and those students started coming down the aisle that we had in our own library, so it made it extra special, it was so overwhelming. I just had to take a deep breath so that I wouldn't start crying. We have, these are our high school equivalency folks. So what that is, it used to be the GED. They just rebranded it, same thing. It's a high school equivalency test. So it's equivalent, this diploma is equivalent to a high school diploma, and it's accepted nationwide, all colleges, and now all branches of the military as well. And it's made up of five tests. Reading and writing are separate, and then math, science, and social studies. And how it works is the student comes in for a pre-test, look at those results. If they test that they're ready, great, we can schedule the officials. It takes about 24 hours to schedule and to download. Everything's electronic. If maybe they're not ready yet, that's okay. We provide the support. And the way we provide support is we have in-person classes. We have the HiSET lab. So the, the HiSET people who write the test wrote this program. The people can work online, and it's geared right towards learning everything you need to pass the tests. We have that in-person, and we have it remotely as well. We had last year 16 HiSETs awarded. And like I said, our graduation was June 14th. Currently, I have 20 students preparing, so they're in the HiSET program. And that changes because they'll take their test, and maybe they'll finish up all five. And then, well, we have pre-testing every Friday, so we get new students as well. So far, we have seven graduates. So we're really doing quite well. And I think for next June, our numbers will be even bigger than that. So that's seven families so far that have been changed. It's pretty awesome. Academics. So let's say that a student comes in and they need maybe two or three credits for their high school diploma. Okay, we can do that, too. So what we do is we give them a CASIS test, and that's a comprehensive adult student assessment system. That's what CASIS means. Pre-test, post-test. Everyone does that. Couple of reasons. Most important reason is it gives a detailed report on what that student's skill set is. And then that report is read by the teacher, and every student has an individualized plan for their credit that they are working on. And so maybe a student is really good at fractions, but they need help with algebra. The teacher knows, don't waste time on, on the fractions. Let's just go right to algebra. So it's an amazing report that our teachers use. Also, the DOE tracks the data. I have to do this huge report at the end of the year, and I have to report on measurable skill gains. And if we're doing okay, then our students have made some good progress. If I need to do a little bit of work and help out my teachers, then the DOE will come back and say, you need to increase that measurable skill gains. What can we do to help you? So it's really important assessment that we give pre-test and post-test to every student that we have. Our diploma classes, our current offerings, we have chemistry, and that's a remote class. And that's really like a flipped classroom. So the teacher has, he actually did this when he was chemistry teacher during COVID. He taped all of his labs so that the student can see the lab, and then they can do the work that goes with that. And, and so this is a synchronous class, so the student's there, the teacher's there. And then we can use it for credit recovery, but we can also use it to help as a prerequisite to get into a community college, like a nursing program. And then we have math as well, and that's in-person. During the summer, we had a large math class for credit recovery and a very large class for English Language Arts. And they all, all the students earn their credits. So sometimes if a student struggles during, during the school year, they come to us in the summer, and we're able to help them so that they can graduate on time. Our college and career advisor is Lisa Grace. And then I told you about our Hub 9 Career Navigator that is grant-funded, Kate Points. That grant ends at the end of June. We're hoping they extend it. We don't know yet, but she, she has reached hundreds of people to help them to find a job, to help rewrite resumes. She helps with the bi-monthly job fairs that we have. And she works with everyone in the hub. So the Hub 9 means all of York County. It's all of the adult eds in York County. She's housed at Sanford, which I'm very thankful for. And then I'm the fiscal agent for her, so I do the data and, and report to the state. Our multi-language learners, there's some pretty great pictures there. We have currently 90 students, and those are all the countries that our multi-language learners come from. Congo, Angola, Ecuador, Honduras, Vietnam, Cambodia, China, Japan, Venezuela, and India. 90, and we're getting more. We have 15 in our Q, we call them, that they need to have CASIS, and that they will join us for the December, our next, our winter term. So our, our numbers are increasing. And so I was panicking a little because I didn't have the staff to make these classes really work, because it, right now, I have four staff, and with this many students, you need smaller classes. Learning a language is exhausting. And so I was saying this one day when I was, this summer, went to a welding celebration and the York County Community College Dean of the Workforce was there, Kate Grant. And so I was just kind of saying, I don't know what, what I do, you know, my budget. And, and she said, oh, I think we can help. And she has. She came through today and told me, we've been working on this grant. And what it will do, it starts today, and it ends the end of June, and it funds six teachers. So my four current teachers and then hired two more. It funds 50 students for Burlington English. And what that is, that's a web-based program that teaches English. It's interactive. It's, it's verbal. It's a wonderful program. Students can download the app on their phone, but if they don't have a phone, this grant will also provide a Chromebook that the student can keep. Now, they're, they're giving me 50 seats of Burlington English. So what do we do with the other 50? Well, I already accessed another grant, so that we bought seats, so that everyone has their own Burlington English account. And the folks in Burlington English come down, she spends the day, she brings lunch, which is nice, spends the whole day with us, and teaches every student and every staff member how to use Burlington English. Also, York County Community Action has set up a bus stop right at our front door, which is wonderful, because before, folks were being dropped off at Hannaford and having to walk. There's quite a ways when it's either stifling hot or very cold. So we worked with York County Community Action, and now we have a, a bus stop. We actually have two bus stops right out in front of us. We talked about the Backpack Program earlier. They have increased the amount of food that they give to us. We spend Thursdays when we get the drop-off, making up bags for every student. And we learned the hard way that that's the best way to organize it. And so then every student, every student, my MLL students and my academic students go home with a nice bag filled with, as you know, the fresh fruit and produce and, and shelf-ready foods as well. We have a closing, a clothing closet. A lot of our folks, especially from Angola and the Congo, they haven't experienced the winter. So they don't have the warm coats and the hats and mittens and gloves. So we've been collecting that. And I had, oh, probably 10, 15 coats last Thursday. They were gone within minutes. I brought people down. I had to put a limit that they could only take one, but they, they need this. So we, we're still collecting with, for our clothing closet. Sheets they need, baby clothes. We have lots of babies going to be born soon. So it's really, we do so much more than educate. Educate is very important, but like we know, if, if a student is hungry, if they're cold, it's going to be hard to learn. We're having a fall harvest dinner on the 16th, where every student is invited at noon time to bring a traditional dish of their own, and we're going to as well, and just sit and enjoy each other and learn about the different cultures and, and sample some pretty amazing food and have fun together, which is nice, too. Full disclosure, these are my grandchildren. They are amazing. We have toddler time every Friday, nine to 11. It's free. It's taught by a certified instructor, and she donates her time. It's taught by a certified instructor and she donates her time to us. She has two sets of twins. And she says that she will pay us just to come and help teach this class for us. And what we do is we provide, everything was donated in our toddler room. And we provide a space for parents, guardians to come, bring their child, socialize. Maybe they might want to stop in to see what we have to offer. I go down and check, especially if my grandkids are there. I go down quite a bit and check in and just to see if there's anything I can do to help. Enrichment is another part of Adult Ed. And we have for our winter-spring, 315 enrichment classes. That's a lot. 155 of those are workforce classes. And those are the American Medical Professions, UGOT class, and Center for Legal Studies are all online. And you can get micro-credentials to help get a job and to improve your livelihood. Welding is with our own Adam from, Adam Hartford from the SRTC. And he does a certified welding program every summer for us. But he also does welding if folks want to come and just to maybe find out if they like it or learn a little more about welding. He does that throughout the year for us as well. We have 40 online classes, enrichment. There's a lot of self-help classes online. There's Zoom. And then we have 120 in-person classes. And that's, I listen, there's CPR, pottery gets filled up. You should see the work that comes out of that pottery studio. And then, you know, ukulele starts in a couple of nights. It's going to be fun to kind of hear that in the hallways. Cricket basics, knitting, printmaking, anything that's interesting, we try to offer it. We, we try to get community feedback. I had a gentleman call just the other day wanting to do a pickup basketball. So I'm working on that as well. It's really the community part of adult education. And any way we can get folks in to see what we're doing and sign up for a class or offer a class is, is our goal that we do. That's why we have indoor walking. We have 30 people signed up. Especially when it starts getting cold, they come in and they, they walk. And we can track the lap so that they know how many miles they walked. That's kind of neat too. Our library is filled with all donated books. And also Kinnebunk Savings Bank gave me $4,000 to help fill it. And it's a free library. So when you come, you take what you want. I had a grandmother the other day come and shop for books for Christmas. I mean, that's wonderful. So they, folks come in, sit down, fireplace is there. We don't turn that on, but we have little twinkly lights that we put on there. It's very nice atmosphere. And it's a beautiful space. We use the library space for our job fairs as well. And then the community part, like I talked about before, we do a lot. We have a job fair two times a month. We work with the Career Center. The sharing shelves, there's pictures of our clothing closet. Learning Works uses office space there. TOPS, it's a picture of the women there taking off pounds sensibly. They come every Friday. We have Senior College that offers painting, a memoir writing class, poetry. CDS uses our space for evaluations. Strategies for a Stronger Sanford uses our space. State of Maine is always calling us and especially Safety Works. Rotary Board meetings are every Monday night. And then also the PTA has movie nights in our library. And some more pictures of what we do. And our motto, like I said, is how can we help? How can I help answer any questions? Or take suggestions?
Anybody have any questions?
Is the Burlington English self-driven, meaning is that a program they can access every day?
Yes.
Okay. And so do they do that with in-person learning or are they strictly just online with the Burlington English?
It's both. So there are lessons that they do in class and it supports what they can do independently. And then, so they have the lesson and it's interactive. They have, they have games that they can play. And it's really nice just to hear the excitement. And then from that lesson, they're supporting, like homework, supporting lessons that they do at home. Yep.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's just, it's wonderful knowing everything that is available there. I haven't had a chance to take any classes lately, but I was taking some of the yoga classes and I've taken other classes before and it's just, it is a very welcoming, wonderful environment. And I'm just so glad that you're on board.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
I am too. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thanks, Jane. Good job. Keep up the good work.
Next up is Mr. Lucy.
Yep, that's it. Okay. Good evening. First item I want to update you on tonight is the work of the vape taco, tobacco committee since our last meeting. The first thing that the committee has done is that we have finalized our response to vape infractions in grades five through 12. It begins with universal prevention. We've looked at our health curriculum in grades five through 12. And we've solidified the use of Catch My Breath, which is delivered during the health classes. We've broken it down into first offense, second offense, third offense, and then fourth offense. So as you move up the ladder, the consequences increase. By the first offense in general, the, the student is removed from the community. We provide some general education for the student that's really tailored to the student based on their, their age, their ability and their interest. We also have a counselor that checks in with them to make sure there are not any other needs that the student needs. And we engage the parent in the guardian, either with a meeting or a phone conversation depending on the student's age. The second offense, there's additional time away from the community, either through out-of-school suspension or time in the support and transition room. We add a more in-depth educational component, which is called in-depth. And once again, having the counselor check in with the student in that parent and guardian involvement. Now, at any point along this continuum, there can be a referral to the substance use counselor. So although when we get to the third offense, that's a requirement. A student can refer themselves anyway, anywhere's along this continuum here as we go along. By the time we get to the third offense, increased time out of school. With our fifth and sixth graders, we're coming down to central office and we're doing a more formalized plan. Substance use counseling referral at that time is initiated and we have that parent involvement. Hopefully, by the time we get to the third offense, we have supported the student and they've decided to make better choices. But in the event that we have a fourth offense, it's a 10-day out-of-school suspension. They come down to central office where we develop a first-time plan that will include counseling, community service, and additional education through the CERT program, the Student Intervention Reintegration Program, which supports students that are further down the road in their use with that. I will say in general, in terms of our numbers this year, where we're at, I did have the specific numbers, but I didn't put them in here. Our vape infractions are down this school year. We're still, we're still early in the school year, but they are trending downwards. We'll see if that continues. In terms of our substance use counselor, she's busy. Currently, she is seeing 23 students, 14 students at the high school and nine students at the middle school. And she has one in the Q. With that, we did a number of plans last week for JICH violations, marijuana violations. And so I would expect that that number would be increasing by the end of the week with there. In addition to that work that we've done, we put together a flyer. That this is really for students that outlines why vaping is prohibited on school grounds, what the consequences for use or possession on school grounds will be, and what they can do if they encounter vape on campus. In addition to, at the bottom, there's some, where they can turn for support. We've also put out a news article to parents just to let them know this is what the committee has been up to. And at the end of that, there's also letting parents know if their child's having, if there's some concerns about their childhood, here's who they can reach out to. In addition, on our Facebook post, our Facebook page, the beginning of every week, I think this is the third week now, we've posted a video, a very short video from the main CDC that is targeted towards teens and vaping use, just to get that message out and to raise awareness. And so I'd like to say that Sam Bonzi has helped the committee in putting some of this together. So thank you to Sam. Our next meeting is next week. Really going to be looking at, we've put all these things in place. How is it in action? You know, boots on the ground. How is all this working? Do we need to make any tweaks? Looking at how do we get students involved? I know the middle school sources of strength group is taking vape on and they're working on a campaign to do with students up there. But are there some other ways we can get students involved? And then an update on where we're at with the grade three and four curriculum. We have some resources that we've shared with the health teachers in grades three and four and looking at what those next steps will be for that. Any questions on the vape committee before I move on to the next thing?
Steve, has there been any further discussion with municipal leaders? You know, just about what's happening locally in our community? I know we had tentatively talked about flavored, flavored vape, I don't know what they're called, pods?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. We did meet, I can't remember if it was in October or September. We did have Moore Hurley and Pete Transmontaine from the City Council. They came and joined our group. And we talked to them about some of the struggles that we're having in schools, how easy it is for students to access. We talked about from in our stores, our front, you know, we walk in the store, you see it. But we also talked about online ordering. They were receptive. They, they know it's an issue. I think there's a lot of push to have that legislation not come locally, but come through the state. And I've been following the news and actually it's also, I think, there's a national push on some of these things as well. So really taking it out of the local and making it more of a state push.
But just to clarify, there has been municipalities that have taken it at the local level?
There have been. Yeah.
Okay.
And I think right now, the focus and the push is getting behind that momentum on a statewide and looking at the, trying to really push that initiative first. And this second legislative session, as they're coming back, because I think there's like three or four things that are out there right now that there's some energy behind. So it's going to be the, monitor that with the hope that there's going to be action from that.
My hope would be that if we're able to do that legwork at the school committee level, that we are a conduit of information through our communication portals in the event that they need testimony at the state level or emails in at the state level. I think it's really important that we put really simple instructions out there for folks to know what's going on specifically to the bill.
Next update I have is about our ESOL program. Just to give you some numbers, October 1st, we had 103 students and as of today, we had 105 students. We've had three move in and five, no, three out. We've had five in, three out. So we've had a couple more students join us. We did, Beth Lambert, the curriculum director and I, we did meet with the building principals of the schools that have been impacted by our new mayors. And we talked about, you know, what are your successes and what are your challenges? Successes, really, it's, it's a collaborative effort. Really, our schools are supportive. It goes from teachers to students to ESOL staff, school counselors outreach, nurses, transportation, food service, administrative assistants and administrators. All those people are involved at variety of times throughout the day to help support these students. Another success is we feel like we are moving in the right direction in providing direct instruction for our newcomers to our schools. At the high school, students are receiving a full block of instruction in addition to Spartan Time in a study hall, where that study hall, Teresa Weber, the ESOL teacher is provide, able to provide some additional instruction for these kiddos. At the middle school, we offer a full block for students. And at the elementary school, we offer a 30 to 45-minute block. Part of, we're providing direct instruction. That's a piece of the puzzle. It's also important for students to be integrated within our classrooms and experiencing the English language in, in context. Successes in terms of getting students involved in extracurricular activities and athletics. We had some students that were involved in soccer this fall. And this week, there's tryouts at the middle school and there were some students that were signing up again for that. So there's some success there. And success in terms of increasing use of language line, talking points and other translation tools. This was a new venture for many staff and they have taken this on in terms of learning how to communicate with their families and then actually sitting and doing it and not relying solely on our ESOL staff. Because I think that's important. We're all teachers of all students. And so we all need to know how to communicate with all families. And, and so not just our ESOL staff. So we're seeing some success with that. Challenges, student stamina. They're tired by the end of the day. And sometimes when they're tired, we, we see behaviors or we see lack of engagement. But like Jane said earlier tonight, learning a new language is hard. So that stamina is difficult. Instruction in the mainstream classroom, teachers are doing their best, but they're having to learn some new strategies. And they want to do right by our students and they also want to be perfect. And they want to get it right the first time. And so they're having to give themselves a lot of grace as they've worked through these new strategies. And then I had mentioned that communication is a strength, but also communication is an ongoing, ongoing challenge. It seems like we, we have things going and we're good and then the next thing happens. So the latest thing is report cards. So how are we going to communicate that report card info? How are we going to do parent conferences? How are we, and so we're having to work through a lot of those things, but we're doing it. We're doing it. Next step, continued professional development for staff in terms of instructional strategies. Communication in that cultural awareness piece. You know, we're working on the instructional piece, but we also have to pay attention to that cultural awareness piece. With that communication and then family engagement and involvement. The families have, they want to be involved. They want to be engaged in our school. And so how do we help them find meaningful ways to be able to engage? We did receive some additional funding through the main Department of Education in the amount of $60,970 through the multilingual learner hardship funding that came through that was based on our October 1st enrollment. And this, these funds will be useful as we look at the funds we've used to, for translation, interpretation, for professional development, these funds, staffing, these are, these will come in helpful with that. Any questions on our new mayors?
I have a lot to say tonight. So I did just want to put it out there, when you were talking about conferences and things like that. My suggestion, as someone who works with the community daily, would be to just let staff know, to not be hesitant, to also put the onus on them. We had two interpreters within the community who could help go to doctor's appointments and things like that when they were asked by other folks. We've since gained two others. They've advanced that quickly in English. So I've been using up to four people now when I need translation services. So it's been amazing to have that number doubled. I also had a question about high school students. So ESL, the ESL, do they have dedicated English learning class?
Yes. That's what Teresa, Teresa teaches a direct instruction class for new ESL students. So for students that have really limited, limiting English. And then she also teaches a second class for those students that have some skill, but still need some direct instruction in English. This is a new addition this year that we've added. This is a new addition this year, that we've added two levels of classes that she teaches directly. Last year, we only had one, this year, we have enough, we've broken it up into two. And then she provides additional support during the study hall period for instruction, in more of a supportive nature as well.
And is that a credit earning class?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Because I would, I would make the suggestion of that being an ELO. Again, what I see is the high school students specifically, who come from homes where mom and dad are slower, you know, possibly not literate in their native language, those kids, I'm still really struggling with the English language from a communication perspective. So I wanted to see how we could link them into additional, additional instruction. And lastly, the things that are going well, I think it's important to recognize the organic offerings that are also happening, and so I would just share that I had two parents reach out to me at the elementary level, who recognized that their children played often with some of our immigrant community children, and they wanted to include them in a winter footsall team, and asked me if I would ask the parents to disclose their information to them, and so I was able to connect them on the WhatsApp app, and they've organized the registration and the transportation, and so that, I really appreciate organic offerings within the community, yeah.
Awesome. And finally tonight, I have a transportation update. Just to let you know, the request proposals were sent out at the beginning of October. If you remember, our transportation contract is up at the end of this year, and so with the help of Cheryl Fornier, we got that out at the beginning of October. We did have, there's a period of time when folks can ask questions, and so we had two vendors in addition to Legemire reach out and ask us questions, a lot of questions. We did take some time, with the help of Legemire, to answer those questions, and we got those back to folks last Wednesday. The RFPs are due on Monday, they're due at 10 o'clock on Monday, and our plan is to open those up at, on Monday, in the conference room, and then we'll look at the materials, and then schedule interviews. We're looking at a tentative date on Tuesday, November 28th. Unsure of a time, but we're probably looking for a representative from the school committee to join us as we interview the contractors that bid. That's all I have for you this evening.
That was a lot, thank you. Can I just say, for the, everything that has to do with the new mayors, it was just a tremendous amount of work that our entire district has done, and I, as somebody who came later, and I went through a program like this when I first moved to this country, and had to learn English as a second language and everything, just, I can appreciate so much every level of everything that you mentioned, and I just want to say, thank you, to everybody involved.
Yeah, I really think classroom teachers are really the folks, if you see them, say to them, thank you, and you're doing a good job. Those are the folks that are struggling the most right now, so if you see them, just say thank you.
Yeah, I will, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, Cheryl Fornier, you're on.
Good evening. So here I have the August and September financials. I didn't do a write-up for anything for the August ones, because there's really not a lot of information, but just the timing at the beginning of the year, because so many expenses don't hit in the first two months of the year. We have no teacher or ed tech salaries, so we have a lot of expenses that don't hit, so just one invoice having a different timing than last year can skew the whole data. So instead of really looking at the August financials, I'm going to set those aside and talk about September, because those get a little more meaningful. It's still early in the year, because with one month of real expenses, one invoice still can skew it, as you can see for revenue, but right now, we are running about $71,000 below budget on year-to-date. You can see that, based on the red and blue first two bars. And then you see the revenue, and that's all because of some timing of when we received a couple of items, and so it looks like we've really had a windfall in revenue, but it's just a timing, because some, it will be received in October of this month, or the next month, when we hot talk next time. So I'm not going to say, hey, we got all this money, because we really don't. So then when we look at the federal grants, if you scroll up a little bit, federal grants, we've received about $139,000 worth of revenue and had $376,000 worth of expenses, and that's a lot of it, is because we have just finished September, which is our first big expense month, and we haven't really billed anything. So it all kind of, it takes a little time to get things rolling into the new fiscal year. Enterprise funds, as you can see, we have about $178,000 worth of revenue and $406,000 worth of expenses. That's a lot of that is food service, because we buy a bunch of the goods that we need for like a three-month period, some of the paper goods and stuff like that, so we have some of the bigger expenses that start at the very beginning of the school year. And the summer program does kind of skew it a little bit, too, because the revenue is, takes a little while to get that in, and because we bill it at the end of the summer. So we'll see that the revenue will catch up. We should only be about one month's worth of expenses difference on nutrition, so that will look better in the future. Then the Essar position, or the Essar money, we've had $625,000 worth of revenue and $305,000 worth of expenses. Most of that is due to we billed out June, which is a huge month for us, for Essar, and so that all came in at the beginning of the school year, or beginning of our fiscal year. We are slated, Essar II is done as of the end of September, so that revenue should be coming in shortly. I think we have got one more bill to do. So then if we go into all the, all major grants, it's really, it does, the major grants, I probably should talk about that. Hardly any revenue, $67,000, but we've had $615,000 worth of expense. That is the Russ grant. The Russ grant is, we pay for all of it at the beginning, and then we get the money after. So it's a reimbursable, and it's a very big, it's a $1 million grant, but it's not just for us, it includes five school systems, so it's, you know, probably, you know, one-fifth of it or so is for us, which is for Permethion boards, that we're putting in at some of our schools, there's a little bit going to each school. And so that's why that looks horrible right now, but that's because we have not received the half a million dollars that we've billed, that we've already paid out. So we should be seeing that shortly. I have not seen it as of today, so. It has been billed out, though. So Article I is right within budget, we're about $40,000 or just $35,000 under budget. As you can see, we're pretty close to what we were last year also, so we're running the way we should be. Article II, we're also right at budget, I mean, $9,000 couldn't get much closer in a big budget like that, so we're looking good there. We're a little ahead because of paying for some of the outside placements, or, which we talked about during the budget process, of the increase of expenses on that, due to people moving into the area and added people to the outside placements. Career and technical, we're way under budget, I think it's just timing, I know they've been, they've purchased a lot of supplies, but I don't think they've come in, or we haven't gotten billed for them, so I assume that's going to happen. I think the changeover from Kathy to Matt probably delayed a little bit on buying some of the supplies, and then I also know we've been having a little bit of a supply change on certain things that may be affecting it a little bit, too. So I know they've been purchasing, we've been in contact with Darlene quite a bit, and we're working through some of the grants, too, because we have one of the grants that we wanted to spend down, and I think they're spending that first, instead of second. Article IV, that one looks like we're way under budget, but I think it's more just timing. We, last year, we paid $60,000 worth of officials right at the beginning of the school year. We didn't do that this year, we did about half that, because we still had some left over from last year. So we were trying to figure out how that system worked, and wanted to make sure it actually, didn't want to have to worry about it, and so we paid it all, a lot of it upfront. Now we're trying to do it a little more seasonal, and so I think really, we're running within budget, it's just the timing of those. Article V, I mean, I don't think it could get much closer than that one either, we're less than $5,000 difference, based on the percentages from prior year, so we're running pretty good with that. Article VI, same thing, $10,000 difference, this one, that could be just one invoice coming through that we haven't done yet, but everything looks to be going pretty good. Article VII, of course, which is the school administration, we're under budget, we're even below what we were last year, and so everything looks really good there. Transportation, it looks horrible, because it looks like we're way over budget, but what it is, is we, last year, we paid their first invoice in October, and not in September, we paid it in the last week of September, and so that's just a timing issue, so I'm not worried there at this point, though we are a little worried about homeless expense to talk about probably in the future, and keeping an eye on that, because that's one of my biggest concerns, is the transportation for homeless going up, and special ed, because of the outside placements. Article IX, it looks a little skewed, and it looks like we're running below last year, well, that was the Willard Building mostly, because we were doing the renovations and all of that, which happened last summer, we didn't have that, so it looks like we're really running under prior year, but we're good. We don't really have those big expenses that we had last summer while we were renovating. Article X is blank, because we haven't spent any money yet, and didn't last year either. And then Article XI, we're running right at budget, I mean, that's Sarah and Brett, so that's, we're running right there at budget, and that looks awesome. And then adult education, which we added a couple months ago, is running under budget, and then under prior year, and I think some of that is timing. I know they've been focusing on a lot of stuff that we got some grants for, too, so I think that could be part of it. So that is my September financials.
So it sounds like, Cheryl, things are trending, as you would expect, a little bit of a concern for what the cost may be for the transportation for homeless?
Yes.
With that, and any other things that have you also looking at it, that we're going to also want to keep an eye on?
Not yet. Haven't really had a chance to really dig in, because there's not enough information there, because really, we've only got one month for the most items, so it kind of, you know, is that following a trend, or is that following what happened in the prior? So I'll probably have more to come on that, but right now, I don't see anything jumping out at me.
Looking for, any questions from, okay, looking for recommendation to approve the August 2023 financials as presented?
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you, Melissa, all in favor? All in favor? And recommendation to approve the September 2023 financials as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, both of you, all in favor? All in favor. Moving on, no old business to discuss.
We do have some resignations, one retirement, resignations, Lindsay Strout for a high school indoor track assistant coach position, Kelly Coles in Ed Tech 2 at the middle school, Richard Gibbs, flex shift custodian at the high school, and as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Kelly Termath is a school committee member. Retirement to announce, Craig O'Brien as a second shift custodian will be getting done at the end of December, he's announced that now, so we are in the process of trying to get out in front of that to hire his replacement. Craig's been a longtime custodian for us over at Sanford Pride, prior to that was Willard, and so he is definitely going to be missed there. Some staff appointments to announce, Suzanne Cody in the kitchen, part-time at C J L, Ed Tech 1 at, over at MCS is Amanda Marsters, middle school cheering coach Jennifer Capel, testing facilitator for the district Christine Taylor, Ed Tech 1 self-contained at Pride, Laurel Muse, Ed Tech 1 at the middle school Audrey Whitehead, Ed Tech 1 as technology support specialist at the high school Joseph Comba, Katrina Woodard, the varsity cheering coach at the high school, and Kevin Hill will be middle school volleyball coach in the second winter session at the middle school. And then other Schedule D, Schedule C 1 and Schedule D appointments, co-assistant athletic directors Josh Allen and Nate McLean. And then you also have a list of our winter coaching stipends, as winter athletics started today at Sanford Middle School, and will be starting in a couple weeks at the high school. Jacob Mills, varsity boys basketball, Matt Willett, boys JV, Dawson Smith, first-team boys, Rossi Kirsten, varsity head coach, Taylor Tarr for the girls, Taylor Tarr, JV girls coach, Stephanie Bosinow, unified basketball, over at the middle school Jamie Lovejoy and Amanda Roy on the girl's side, Nate Mann, Keith Gendron on the boy's side, as I just mentioned about Katrina and Jen as the cheerleading coaches, and then for wrestling, Nate Smith and Brent Coleman, and then Brent will also do the second shift middle school, which will be the second winter season after the high school season wraps up. A couple transfers to announce, Justine Williams moving from an Ed Tech 3 at MCS to the support and transition Ed Tech 3 position at the middle school, Jen Beatty moving from an Ed Tech 2 at MCS to, from an Essar position to a local position and local budget, and then Jody Cinco from second shift custodian over at Sanford Adult Ed, in the bridge program over at the second, to second shift custodian at the high school. And there are no nominations to read this week, staff nominations.
Okay, moving forward, policies and procedures?
I have one policy this evening for our first read, that's Policy BDE, which is school committee standing committees. This policy was last updated in 2006, and the updated policy just adjusts the standing committees and the advisory committees. Standing committees are those committees that are meeting on a standard, a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, that we post, the public is invited to attend, there's minutes, you can go back and see the minutes. So the policies we have, the standing committees we have are curriculum, dropout prevention, and then the policy committee. Advisory committees are those committees that we don't post, they are usually, sometimes they are, I lost my train of thought, sometimes they are a committee we, committee we have for just a short period of time. Other times, they're long, longer standing committees, and so for the advisory committees we have are adult education, safety, the performing arts, special education, Sanford Regional Technical, so the technical committee, and then the wellness committee. And my recommendation is to accept that first read of Policy BDE.
So moved. Do you want to second it, or can I second it?
I second that.
All in favor?
All in favor.
And the second policy I have tonight is a second reading, Policy BCB, which is school committee conflict of interest. The updated policy more clearly defines potential conflicts of interest of school committee members, and I recommend the second reading of that policy.
Do I need to repeat that, because I didn't say it in the microphone? Recommendation to accept BCB as presented?
I second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, all in favor.
So we're moving right through the, we did the As last year, the policy manual, section B, we are moving right along with those policies. If you go to our minutes, you can see those policies we've reviewed, and if they're reviewed, if there are no changes, we just marked reviewed, but we're moving at a good clip, and so. But we're moving at a good clip and so we'll have more for you in December.
Thank you for all that work. Okay, moving on, no items for future agenda and calendar announcements.
As I mentioned, special ed advisory committee this Wednesday at 2:15. The stipend advisory committee this Thursday at 2:45. This Friday, there'll be no school as we celebrate Veterans and honor Veterans Day. The vape tobacco committee, as Steve mentioned, is a week from tomorrow, November 14th, 2:45. Our next school committee meeting will be in the form of a school committee workshop. That's scheduled for November 20th. I think we're going to be looking at, needing to determine the time on that. I also think we're going to need a meeting as well to talk about the school committee vacancy. And then Wellness Committee is also on November 20th. Our next policy committee meeting is going to be Monday, the 27th. And then in December, we have our first regular school committee meeting. Business meeting will be on Monday, December 4th. And as we try to do with the first Monday of each month, a safety committee will also be there. So those are upcoming calendar announcements.
Thank you very much. That is all we have for everybody tonight, folks. Recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:51.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, all in favor? All in favor.